Good evening, welcome to Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13, Columbia Heights Minnesota School Board Meeting for Tuesday, December 12th, 2017. I'd like to call meeting order and ask you to please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome. We need to do a roll call if you wouldn't, Nanny.
Yes. Palmer?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Samurai?
Here.
Severson?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Larkin?
Here. Thank you. Our mission statement, Columbia Heights Public Schools create worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next up would be the approval of the agenda. If I get a motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Got to give it to Nanny.
Second.
Thank you. Lauren. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Announcements, December 22nd through January 2nd, there'll be no school, it's winter break. January 9th at 5:30, there'll be a school board organizational meeting here in the community room. Also, January 9th at 7:00 PM, there'll be a regular school board meeting here. January 16th at 5:00 PM will be a school board listening session, and January 16th at 5, the listening session is at 5, and then the school board work session is at 10 until we schedule first 5:30 right now. Next up would be communication to the board. Citizen and employee representatives, at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. If you would like to speak, if there's blue cards in the back, if you'd fill those out completely and then get them to Dawn, please. Just based on topics for the evening, we went through this last time, and I just want to do just a little introduction to one of the topics in particular. And I'll just read it as I did last time, and that's based on topics listed for tonight. I'd like to take a minute to inform or remind anyone speaking, including the school board members, that there are federal laws, state statutes, as well as district policies that prohibit public discussion of information or specific incidents in regards to staff and students under data privacy. So please speak in gentle terms to prevent the need to stop conversations. And with that, we'll start with William. Yes? Need a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Nanny? Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. And for the record, consent agenda includes the minutes of the November 14th and 28th school board meetings, and the November 21st work session, the personnel report, the treasures report for September and October of 2017. Next up is a...
You have to summarize the communication report.
Oh, yeah, we had, during our communication to the board, we had two different individuals speak to us. One individual discussed generalities of all concerns for bullying with the request that administration follow up with some information regarding statistics, and the other individual spoke about some concerns about some issues that were taking place at one of the buildings. As far as acknowledgement of contributions, we've got a resolution. If I get a motion, a second, I'll read it.
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Thank you. Hold on.
Whereas Minnesota Statute 123B .02 permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose, and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the people, for the benefit of the pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the school board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number 13, that the school board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $2,793.88. And the detailed background includes, a donation of $105 was made to North Park Elementary by St. Timothy's for hats and mittens for student needs. A donation of $250 each was made to Highland Elementary, North Park Elementary, and Valley View Elementary by the Columbia Heights Lions Clubs for hats and mittens for students' needs. The following donations were made to the Columbia Heights High School Scholarship Program, $40 from LP Restad, and $50 from Pam Segredson. The following donations were made to the Columbia Heights Eat Up the Debt Campaign, Eric Lindholm, $200, Ranjana Tukral, $100, Stephanie Lee, $100, Mary Hansmeyer, $100, Lauren Mueller, $100, Stephen Kalpin, $100, Connie Biskin, $100, Anonymous, $100, Tara Tukral, $51, Christine Carr, $50, Christine Reynolds, $50, Tracy Woodward, $50, Mary Grandland, $50, Kristin Stunkel, $50, Colleen Graff, $50, Michael Prowitz, $50, Rita Now, $50, Anonymous, $50, Allison Thompson, $25, Janice and Jim Madison, $25, Julie Katier, $25, Anonymous, $25, John Kraus, $20, Christine Pudney, $10, Daniel Thompson, $10, Anonymous, $120, and Anonymous, $120. Questions, comments, or discussion?
Some in kind. Yeah, in kind.
Oh, I'm sorry. There's a value in kind, I apologize. Donation of coat to Valley View by Barb Nundal for student needs, estimated value of $26. A donation of a coat to Valley View Elementary by Dave DeJournette for student needs, estimated value of $71.88. And a donation of apples to Highland Elementary by Falding American Legion Post 555 for teacher appreciation, estimated value of $75. Total fiscal 2017-2018 monetary contributions to date, $9,110.42. Thank you. Now, questions, comments, or discussion?
Thank you. Thank you for the contributions.
Yeah, thanks.
Apples for teachers, that's fun.
Apples for teachers, yeah. There's no further discussion, this is a resolution, so a roll call, Nanny.
Palmer?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
A Samurai?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Larkin?
Hi. Thank you. Next up would be discussion reports and information items. Board members will report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Holla, okay, starting.
Since the last regularly scheduled board meeting, I've been communicating with community members and constituents.
Thank you. Nanny?
Yeah, I was able to take in the first swim meet of the season, also a basketball game. I was able to meet with Superintendent Kelly and Chair Larkin. Got to take in a robotics tournament at the middle school last weekend, which was very fun. It's fun to see all the kids there and all the inventive things they can do with those robots. Makes me kind of jealous, actually. They're doing a great job teaching those kids, and they had several teams, Columbia Heights represented several teams over the course of the weekend. And then I was able to talk to community members as well.
Thank you. Well?
Yeah, despite being super busy with some travel and some sports starting, I don't think that I've been doing any board-related activities over the last couple of weeks, except talking to Member Mueller and also some community members. That's it.
Thank you. Lauren?
All right, since our last meeting, I was able to attend the first of the season wrestling tournament, which took place in Osseo. It was exciting to see our student wrestlers, some medals came home after that weekend tournament. Also, went to the home wrestling tournament here at the high school. I attended the Phase 1 school board training Friday evening. I also had a meeting with Director Carr regarding the finance pieces that we're discussing today. I attended the high school parent night over at the high school, and attended this evening, I was able to get the trifecta of the girls' basketball game, listening to the pep band, and watching the dance team perform at halftime. So, it was a great evening over at the high school tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura.
Well, I attended the monthly 9-16 board meeting. The 9-16 is the collaboration of special ed school district. We're one of 13 members that participate in that, and we provide, help to economize as far as special ed services. So that's one of the meetings I attended. I also was able to attend the Indian education tribal consultation, because we participate in both the state and the federal program as far as being able to provide the special services for American Indian students, and that we had a really healthy conversation there. And they had some wonderful suggestions, and they asked a lot of questions about the different things we were doing here at the district. And overall, it was, I think the meeting was supposed to take about an hour, I think we spent about two hours talking with them. So anyway, so that went really well. And that, that's pretty much it for me.
Okay, thank you. I attended the North Sherman Chamber meeting, and then a chair meeting prior to this meeting tonight.
I attended the chair meeting, too.
You were there, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and that concludes our reports from the boards. Next up is building vision card for North Park. Principal Sasek and Director Sten.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, I'm here this evening with Principal Sasek of North Park Elementary and Dean Nathan Meyer, who's also at North Park Elementary. We're here this evening to present the North Park Building Vision Card from the 2016-17 school year. And with that, our district's mission, of course, is to create worlds of opportunity for every learner, and our core values of community excellence, collaboration, inquiry, or, excuse me, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Principal Sasek to introduce his vision card.
Okay. Chair Larkin, members of the board, good evening. Okay, the first thing we're going to look at is enrollment. Enrollment is something where North Park has taken a hit in the last year or two. Our current enrollment is 440 students. Last year, we were at 473 students. We graduated a very large 5th grade class last year, and we did not, we have a very small kindergarten class this year. We're already doing our recruiting for kindergarten for next year. We actually have a very healthy census for this upcoming school year, as opposed to a very smaller census. There seemed to be a bit of a dip in the live births for the 17-18 kindergarten class. Demographics, as far as free reduced lunch goes, we've seen an uptick of that at North Park. We actually are over 80% free reduced lunch now. And then also looking, about a solid third of our students are English learners. We actually have 37 languages that are spoken in North Park, which is brilliant, it's an absolutely wonderful thing. And 14% of our students are special education students, and that includes two center-based special education programs, which are setting three special education programs for students with developmental cognitive disabilities. And looking at MCA proficiency, we took a dip in math this year. I know we saw that among many of our elementary schools. We adopted a new math curriculum this year, last year, for the 16-17 school year. It's incredibly rigorous. The teachers and students actually like it quite a lot, the parents like it quite a lot. We currently, we spent a good chunk of last year really backfilling a lot of the knowledge, because the students basically had to skip ahead almost a full year, and we had to try to make that up in a year. And we're already seeing some positive formative assessments this year, and so we're hopeful for significant improvement this year. We did improve by 5.2 points in reading last year, and reading was our main focus. And in science, you know, I know that at North Park, we have the reputation of being pretty solid in science, and it's, we have a wonderful science specialist with Mr. Stan Maraz, and our teachers are in there, our classroom teachers also. And science is something we take very seriously, as seriously as reading and math, and I think our scores do show that, we're pretty consistently at or above 50% with our science scores. This is something I really wanted to point out, because our MCA reading scores, if you look at them overall, were about 36.7%, which is not where we want to be. However, we're seeing a lot of hope, and there are a couple correlations here. If you're looking at our learning studios, 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade is where we have our 21st century learning studios. Last year, our 4th to 5th grade students, between 4th and 5th grade, they saw 14.1% growth, which is, I mean, double-digit growth is, I mean, that's considered off the charts. And that's the second year in a row that we've seen 14-plus percent growth with our 5th graders. And our 4th graders, in addition, last year saw an 11.5% growth. And the one thing that is in common here is those, the personalized learning initiative started in 5th grade two years ago, and last year, it started in 4th grade. And so, we take the personalized learning incredibly seriously. We integrate reading into our personalized learning every single day, and three data sets are usually what we like to see, to consider it a trend. But we have two really solid data sets in 5th grade, and it was followed up by a solid data set in 4th grade. And so, we're confident that this is going to continue. So looking at the strategic roadmap, we're going to get into some of our vision cards here. As you know, we really like turbocharging, and we really like innovation at North Park. Those are things that we really like to focus on, and we think that those are the things that drive us forward. So looking at vision card B, as far as our reading and math scores go, we are at level one. That is where we are. We do not intend to stay there. If we continue to have the double-digit growth in our learning studio grades that we've been seeing the last couple of years, we're not going to be there long. And additionally, we are also, with our new reading curricula, literacy curricula, over the last couple of years, we're seeing a lot of bounce back from the previous curriculum adoption that we had had. Our MCA science scores continue to be at vision, and as they have been, I think, pretty much every year since we've been looking at the vision cards. And then if we're looking at B8, is something that I'm interested in sharing, and that's the MCA gap to standard for student groups. That's what we call the achievement gap. Now, we have highlighted two different columns there. We're at baseline overall, because if you notice, it says reading or math, because our achievement gap is 27% with math. However, with reading, we've actually lowered our achievement gap to 21%. And that's been, that's been a steady progress that we've been seeing over the last three years at North Park, and it is, Director Stenvik, what is the state, do you know what the state achievement gap is for reading?
It's over 30%.
Okay, over 30%. So we have closed the achievement gap to below what the state is, and you'll see with our goals that we continue to take it quite a lot further. So if we're looking at B14 and 15, this is something that we take very seriously at North Park, we're very equity-minded. We spend an awful lot of time, half of every staff meeting is staff development based on equity, and we have a very active equity team. So equity is a language that we speak, and we are always disappointed when we're looking at the difference between student groups and referrals out of class. We are at an intervention level with the, with the difference in our African-American students as compared to our white students being sent out of class. That's something that is not acceptable for us, and it's something that we continue to work on, and it is always a goal for us. And we are at the vision level as far as out-of-school suspensions go, we have very few out-of-school suspensions. So looking at our SMART goals, you know, we're going 10%. 10% math increase, 10% reading increase. We need it in both areas. We're very confident that we can achieve this with a mouth, with a math bounce back, and we've seen it at grades five for two years in reading, and now 4th and 5th grade last year. So we're hoping that that trend continues, and we see an overall 10% gain for the entire school. In addition, AVID, we adopted AVID in 5th grade last year, and I know Dean Meyer will be discussing that a little bit further into the presentation here. But the, our ISS Essential 2, we would like for it to increase from a 1 to a 2. Now, 1 is exactly where we're supposed to be right now with our implementation phase, and in our mid-year ISS, we actually were in a level 2 for several of our, of our areas of assessment, and so we're feeling very good about that, but we want to continue to articulate AVID all over our building.
I'll just clarify, with the AVID program, ISS stands for Initial Self-Study. So, AVID, the AVID program comes with an extensive rubric, and quarterly teaching and learning team meets with teacher teams and the, and the school team to review where, what the AVID goals are, and where the, each grade level lands on that rubric. So the ISS is the initial self-study, and then we have an end-of-the-year self-study as well for certification purposes. Just a little clarification.
Okay, thank you. And then looking at our next goal, we're very serious about the achievement gap. We've decreased it from over 40% to right around 20% in the last three years, and we intend to decrease that to 6% this year. And then looking at the four Cs. Now, four Cs is, it's kind of a hallmark of North Park, as I'm sure you know. And we ranked, rated ourselves quite well on our Bright Bites survey, our teaching staff did, in most areas, but the four Cs, they felt like we were proficient. With our implementation, our goal is to be advanced this year, and we're driving that through an awful lot of professional development, which is something we'll mention later on in the presentation. So now I'm going to turn things over to Dean Nathan Meyer, so he can talk about some of the things that are going on in North Park this year.
Right. Chair Larkin and members of the board, I'm Nathan Meyer, I'm the dean of students at North Park, and it's my first chance to formally talk to you guys, so thank you for having me. So I'm going to talk about a couple really exciting things that are happening in North Park right now. There's a lot of really exciting stuff going on there. But first, we want to talk about the adult learning that is happening within the building. So as Principal Sasek just mentioned, our staff meetings are almost entirely devoted to learning together as a staff. We spent half of every staff meeting discussing technology and working on our last SMART goal that was listed on those four Cs. And then we spent half of every staff meeting talking about equity, talking about how we can be a more equitable school, and how we can work to reduce the achievement gap, and our number of students who are sent out of class, and a lot of different things. So up there, you will see the book A Good Time for the Truth. Our equity team is reading that book this year, just as a, kind of a catalyst for discussion. It is a collection of essays by Minnesotans of color about their experience in Minnesota. And so, we have just read one a month, and we discuss it as an equity team, and it has really provided us a lot of, a different perspective on our state. So it's an interesting book. If you haven't read it, I would recommend it. So that is a lot of the adult learning. Our AVID expansion, so we have expanded AVID into all of our 4th grade, all of our 3rd grade, in one 2nd grade class this year. The, the one thing I will say about AVID is that I had a conversation with a parent after school a couple weeks ago, who was talking about the AVID planner, which you see some of our 2nd graders holding up right there. And she said to me, she's like, "We have something to talk about at the dinner table now," which is such a cool thing, because before she'd be like, "How was your school day?" And you're like, "Fine." And now, she signs the planner and looks at what they've done in school, and has specific questions, and she's like, "We can't shut our kid up," which is awesome. But he just keeps talking and talking and talking about what they're doing in school. So it has definitely worked to increase our school-to-home communication, which is a really cool thing. It is also, when I'm walking around the building and I'm looking at the inquiry and the level of questioning that I see, and the vocabulary that kids are using, it is really neat to see the progression into 5th grade, where it's been more established, and now going down to 4th and 3rd grade, and those kids learning the skills that they will be using all the way through. So it's really neat. And then we have, Mr. Sasek mentioned Mr. Stan Maraz, our science teacher. He is just such an amazing, inspiring scientist. He works so well with our kids and gets them so excited about science. And he is right now working to get North Park to be a green ribbon school. So he has worked with, you can see up there in the first picture, our garden that he has brought all of our classes into. All of our students are out there, it is accessible to every single kid in the building, talking about plants and seeds and harvesting and all sorts of really cool stuff. The picture right below that is of the solar panel installation that was put on North Park this fall, due to a grant that was written. We got those solar panels, which is really exciting. I also got to go up on the roof, which was also really exciting. So, that was really fun, and it's really cool to go up there and see all of the solar panels, and the kids were really excited because they heard some of the pounding that was happening, too. And then just last week, we had somebody come in who helped us look at all of the waste in our cafeteria, and it was determined that over 86% of our cafeteria waste is either recycled or composted, which I think is a really cool thing. And Mr. Maraz has inspired, there's a group of 5th graders who call themselves the Green Team, and they are there at breakfast every day, and as much as classes they can get out to be there at lunch, too, to make sure that kids are, to help kids, especially our younger students, sort their recycling, their compostables, and their trash. So it is a really, a really cool thing. And then we have a little, a couple videos for you. So this is just for your listening pleasure. I have a group of the North Park staff showing off their talents that are not teaching. Last Fri-, for the past two Friday mornings, we've had a group of staff who have pulled out dusted-off instruments, some of them haven't played in 20 years, and under the direction of Mr. Welch, they have formed a North Park Band that has greeted the kids every morning, or the last two Friday mornings.
I didn't do a sound check, so I hope this works. This is as the kids are getting off the buses and walking down to breakfast on Friday mornings.
And it's not in this video, but there's some pictures that we have, and one of them of this kindergartner, and so Ms. Landry, who's playing the trumpet, one of our kindergarten teachers, he cannot, he is just like right up there, kindergartners sometimes have trouble with personal space, and he, but he can't stop looking at her music. So it's just, it's so cool to see him in there and watching her do something that she normally doesn't do.
Going to our next one.
Yep, so that is, that are our North Park Band. And then the next one was just a really fun video, too. We have really loved having...
I don't know how to use a computer apparently.
This is what Xeno was talking about, right? Okay.
Ask a 5th grader.
We're working on those four Cs.
Ask a 5th grader, though.
Yeah. So we are really excited to have Encore back in our building this year as well, and it has been received so well by parents and students. And I get the joy of being at Encore every single day and watching the kids explore these different areas of curriculum that are, we don't have an opportunity to offer during the school day simply because of time constraints. And so this was a couple, I think it was last week, we were waiting, this was for a student to be picked up, and he was up there playing on the piano, and Mr. Welch just sat down next to him and told him, he's like, "Only play the black keys." And he gave him this little impromptu piano lesson, and they just started improvising, and it was really cool.
I will swing to a white key.
So it was super fun to see Mr. Welch just engage with this kid in a, outside of the classroom, but about music, and they just, they created something just on the spot that was really, really cool. And if you've ever been in North Park at parent pickup, oftentimes what we hear from that piano is not nearly as nice as what is coming from it right now. So it was really fun. And then we're just really excited about what the future has to bring at North Park. We have an awesome staff who is so dedicated to our students and to our building and to the mission of our district, and we know that we are building future leaders, and we are building the future of the world at North Park.
So thank you. Any questions?
I have a couple questions. One of them is about the achievement gap for African-American students.
Yes.
The state average is around 40, and then you said it dropped to 21, and you're shooting for 6 next year.
Yes.
So are there specific strategies you're using that are causing that?
Yeah, well, actually, personalized learning has played an enormous role, because our, each of our grade levels really acts as a PLC, and they have common prep, and each grade level meets at least once a week to discuss students and student data. In the learning studios, it's a little bit easier for them to do that, because they're all together all the time, so they really know their students incredibly well. Every single teacher in the studio knows every single student in that grade level, and that allows them really to specialize and put their brains together to do, to use problem-solving, to help out with interventions. And we've also found that during STEAM time, getting students interested in the things they're passionate about gets them reading. And that is another thing that we're pretty confident has helped to increase our reading scores in 4th and 5th grade in particular. There's really not a lot of magic to it, as you know, as an educator yourself. It's a matter of getting students... It's a matter of getting students interested and engaged and engagement is something that we struggle a lot less with when our third, fourth and fifth grade students, when they're working on the things they're passionate about.
That's, that's refreshing to hear. The other thing I was wondering about is you mentioned the equity team.
Yeah.
Typically, in the world of education, the problem tends to be that the people who are on the equity team are the ones who feel really strongly about it and then everyone who really needs it is not on it. So is this equity team more encompassing of more staff members or is there another way to get the work out to everybody?
We do have members of every grade level on our equity team and our equity team actually drives our professional development in equity that occurs at every single staff meeting. And that professional development is not led by Nathan or me. That PD is led by our equity team teacher leaders and that creates a significant amount of buy-in right there. Equity is really something that we don't get pushback on at North Park. When we started this journey seven, eight years ago, there was some pushback. But I think that it really, that it's, a level of comfort with discomfort has come about at North Park that has really helped us continue to make gains in the area of equity. And it's something that everyone is always thirsting for. I know in the summers, by and large, the conferences and the trainings that our teachers want to go to are almost always equity-based. We have a couple of teachers right now that are doing, taking advantage of a PD opportunity through the University of Minnesota that's equity and technology integration. And so it's like, how is, is technology being used equitably in our schools and how do we ensure that, that there is crossover between equity and the use of technology for learning? And it's some really exciting stuff. But it's pretty rare that we have a teacher even in their, in their worst moments that have any kind of complaint about how much equity that we do.
And I will say too, my first three months at North Park, I have not had any pushback with a teacher about conversations relating to equity, which I have been, I was surprised at because I was, you expect that a lot of the time.
You want pushback, have them do the IDI.
Every staff person at North Park's done the IDI.
Wow.
So it is, it's, I was, it's so fun to work with a staff that is so committed to that.
That's quite impressive. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, talking about the, the learning studios and the gains, what do you, what do you think that the learning studios are causing those gains, just out of?
Well, I think collaboration plays an enormous role. I think collaboration among students, for instance, just to use a very recent intervention as an example, it's the Press Intervention System that we're using through the University of Minnesota that all of our schools are using. The tier-one intervention, the first intervention that you do, the class-wide intervention, is partner reading. It's all about collaboration and collaboration is something that comes so easily to North Park students because they do it all the time. And being in the environment of the learning studio, you can't help but collaborate. That's just how things are done. So not only is collaboration a skill that our students have to be able to master to be successful in the 21st century, it also is a skill that's only going to help them in their hard, in the harder skill areas that actually are tested like, like reading and math. Additionally, we, there's so much more adult support, although we don't have more teachers in a studio grade level than we do in another typical grade level, those teachers, because they are working together with the larger group of students, there's always more support. When there is a student struggling, it's a lot easier for an adult to take a student aside, take them out in the hallway to work with them, things like that, because there are other adults that are in that learning space. There are just many, many things that make the studios more flexible and we think, we think more advantageous learning environments for students.
With the high EL population, thirty-three percent, does that help with their student scores as they go through? Because I was just jotting down notes at the, you know, thirty-three percent English learners. I mean, that has to impact MCA data or not, or I'm not sure how that?
Well, actually, historically, our EL students have scored high in MC, on their MCAs. In fact, I think it was like three years ago, the US Department of Education actually sent consultants out to look at all of our elementaries with regard to our EL instruction because what we were doing was getting such outstanding results. That doesn't mean, I mean, our EL students, obviously they're reading in English and it's their second language, so they might not be scoring as high as a lot of our native speakers, but compared to EL, EL learners throughout the state and the country, they're actually quite successful.
Right.
Anyone else?
Welcome.
Thank you guys. Yeah. Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Strategic Direction A and B.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Director Hennigens and I are here this evening to present the district-wide strategic directions, A and B. So up to this point now, the board has heard from each and every one of the schools and so this is kind of a culmination or a combination of all of those data points as a whole district. Of course, our mission is to create worlds of opportunity for every learner and this presentation really covers our core values. So district-wide, the demographics as compared to last year currently really have not, have not shifted and you've heard the same from each of the principals as well. Along with enrollment by special population, this has been the same pattern over the last few years. So looking at our strategic roadmap, again, we'll be focusing on A and B this evening. So we'll go through, we'll go through and we may not read each and every single one, but we'll highlight some of the really important pieces on these scorecards. So one thing that we've been working hard over the last few years is as standards come up and our standards are renewed and then on our district in-service days, really looking at the curriculum and making sure that teacher teams are working together in terms of standards and teaching to standards. So we're at vision for that. Also, as Principal Saucic mentioned in the previous presentation, all of our elementary teachers have common planning time and the secondary teachers are able to meet, meet this monthly requirement of the PLCs. So again, we're at vision there. Formative learning data has really been enhanced over the last few years through the personalized learning initiative. And then as part of that as well, the administrators use for A4, the walkthrough protocol and walkthrough forms and that's something that both Director Hennigens and I monitor and work with the admin and have conversations around those feedback forms.
On this slide, I'm going to focus on the presence and use of 21st century learning. Principal Saucic talked about personalized learning in his building and how he feels it's improving what they're doing and we continue to see growth in this area as we continue to expand our conversations around personalized learning. We continue to expand our conversations around technology in the classroom and pointing out, again, our addition this year of additional tech integration specialists focused in our special ed classes and seeing some really good things in that area. Had the opportunity to see our new tech integration specialists with a group of kids at TIES today in their maker space area, working with coding and the.
Spiro robots.
Spiro robots. Quite amazing. Kids had a great time. It was quite an experience.
So moving on, looking at A7, presence of multi-tiered interventions for academics. This is something that, so of course, this is data reported for last year. This is something that for this year, we're really honing in on through our class-wide and tiered intervention system and working with the University of Minnesota, a large majority of our teachers being trained on that protocol. So this is something that I anticipate over the next couple of years will drastically increase. Also, similar with A9, the presence of STEAM, as, as the board knows, we're piloting Project Lead the Way this, this year at the middle school and with the hopes of expanding that, that program with the engineering and robotics. Of course, Avid is at vision for nine through twelve and as we move to a new vision, revision of the strategic plan, I'm hoping that we can expand that, that metrics from nine to twelve to span all of our schools since that's where we're at. Next, just similar to last year, this year we're presenting two different data points for activities and athletics participation. The reason is it's vastly different from last year at the elementary school compared to the secondary level. So our secondary students are at that vision level and last year, of course, we did not have Encore. There are far fewer students participating in athletics and activities at the elementary level. This is another one that we anticipate drastically increasing as, this year since we have the Encore and the 21st Century Grant. Participation gap is at vision level. You know, our, our students have lots of access to all, lots of activities and athletics. And then parent engagement is at baseline and as the principals all presented to you from each of the building vision cards, there's lots of strategies that we're working to increase that as well. We always collaborate with Director Stunkel on this metric and she always reminds us that students are screened starting at age three, they do not have to wait until age five, and so we're at vision level for this one.
And again, our overall score, you can see from 2016 at seventy-eight percent and 2017, we're just over eighty percent. So we continue to make small gains on Strategic Direction A. Again, I'd like to focus and point out personalized learning and, and our work in that area. So continues to tick up and I'll make a plug wherever I can.
Okay. So let's move to strategic vision card B. So again, B1 and B2, it's a little misleading because when this metrics was created, more grades across the district took the NWEA MAP assessment. At this point, with all of the different assessments, that has been reduced to second grade. So this is really a second grade growth measure. I triple-checked this and the growth isn't where we want it to be. And again, we have put things in place this year with those interventions, with eliminating the previous literacy curriculum in K and one and really beefing up the, the early literacy curriculum so that we'll be seeing these gains as we go forward. Then the curriculum-based measures there at B4, this is another with the Press Intervention System. We're using it quite extensively. So again, this is one that I anticipate being above baseline as we move forward next year. MCA, as all of the schools have reported to you across the district, no one is satisfied and we're striving to increase and move the needle on, on all of our MCA scores, reading, math and science. We've got a lot of different strategies that we're putting in place for that, be it rigorous instruction to standards, changing our, completely changing our math curriculum for K through five and updating our curriculum, our literacy curriculum and then working with all of our secondary teachers with extensive professional development. ACT Plan and Explore, of course, the Plan and Explore, the name of that assessment has changed. So we have very high participation and similar to the MCAs, we're looking to increase those scores. One way that we're doing that is through providing additional boost classes at the, at the, at the high school level in grades nine, 10 and 11. And then also with, the eighth graders just recently took the PSAT exam. So with that, each student receives a learning locator ID number and they can connect that and they will be connecting that in school directly to Khan Academy. So students will be getting that personalized and individualized support, starting at an earlier age as we go forward.
Looking at discipline, we continue referrals out of class. So this doesn't include referrals that happen in the hallway, in the playground, on the bus. This is referrals out of class. We know we want students in class and, and this is the number for the overall district. So includes all referrals from all buildings and it still is hovering around that three thousand, but just over three thousand. So we continue to be at a level one. Definitely still a conversation in the buildings and what we're doing in those areas. Difference between student groups and referrals out of class. So we actually saw movement this year in that from a level one to a level two. So that difference between what our demographic is at, you know, say for one group and in the percentage in the district versus what their percentage of the referrals out of class. So that was a good sign and we could need to continue to grow there. And then our out-of-school suspensions, looking at that number, and again, this was the measure that was developed out of our strategic planning back when we did our strategic planning. And it, we're looking at this number from a district-wide and we still exceed that four hundred and twenty-five of out-of-school suspensions in the district. So again, that's K-12.
For advanced placement, as the board knows, we are, we don't have a lot of barriers for our students. If a student really wants to be in an AP class, they get to be in an AP class and if they need supports, we provide supports. So students are, lots of students are taking AP and not only are they taking AP, they're taking the test and passing it with a score of three or higher, which means free college credit for our families. B-18 there, the graduation rate, we are not in the top twenty-five percent in the state, but we are in the top thirties, so the top third of the state. So that, that's what that metric looks like. Post-secondary enrollment rate within sixteen months, we're at the level four there, between seventy and seventy-nine percent of our students within that year of graduating are entering college. And of course, our Avid students are all accepted hundred percent for many years now and into post-secondary institutions.
So there's a lot of measures. There's twenty in this area and they're all weighted differently. And there's groups of them that are weighted differently in the overall score. So it gets a little complicated and, and when you make little moves, one up, one down, one up, one down, it really doesn't make a whole lot of difference in the overall score. So we still maintain right at forty-one percent for 2017, even though in some areas we did grow, just not enough to move that percentage point. So definitely a lot of areas to work on in the coming year.
Some of those areas, and again, this is all of the schools all together are focusing in on literacy, math and equity, technology integration, along with personalized learning, looking at that social and emotional learning. And then under, you know, as the new federal statute or federal law, Every Student Succeeds Act, really focusing on that well-rounded education. And that means that students have choice in what they're learning. Some of, looking back, we had many things to celebrate in the 2016-17 school year. Just a few reminders, we expanded the Avid program, which we are confident will help with academics. Personalized learning expanded to fourth grade and up through eleventh grade at the high school. The age-three to grade-three task force, again, that early learning is so crucial to success in K-12. Age-three to grade-three, we've really worked hard on aligning standards. So as students move through age-three, age-four and right into kindergarten, there's, it's seamless. Many of our athletes went, competed at the state level last year. Many of our artists and our actors won spotlight awards and, and gold and silver key awards. And who could forget, we hosted the National Medal of Honor Convention activities right outside back in October. I'll never forget, October sixth, right? And our new math curriculum, again, that's based on the Singapore model, really rigorous, really thoughtful in the way that it's planned out and taught. And then over the summer, we received the 21st Century Community Learning Grant, which has provided us with Encore once again. So we're really excited about that. So if there's any questions?
On the, one of the scorecards that you had shown, you talked about the out-of-class referrals and out-of-school suspensions. Have you found any pattern of behaviors or, or any trending in type of what actions or behaviors are causing students to most likely, most often have to be removed from class or removed from the school setting?
Well, I know there's, there's a lot of conversation on, that we've been working on more recently on dissecting the data even further as far as getting ready, really into the specifics, you know, from, you know, what students, how many students are making up all of the referrals? You know, what's the number? Are there high flyers? Are there high flyers? When are the high flyers acting out? Is in the afternoon, is in the morning? So really trying to dive into, you know, what's going on. I know there's been some professional development from the adult's perspective on de-escalation and having conversations, again, we want to keep kids in class, that's important, we know that that's important, so, but we also want classes to run smoothly. So I know a lot of those conversations are happening and I know I personally was pulling information within the last few weeks about that, trying to chart it out and trying to find out if we can create patterns that we can start working on, so.
So we're in the process of that.
Yes.
And then there's a tension that's being paid to meeting our goals of having students stay in class, but still taking care of disruptive behaviors or potentially dangerous behaviors that are causing impact or negative consequences for other students who may or may not be engaging in those behaviors. So trying to strike that balance between meeting, meeting one goal and meeting another goal.
Right.
The directive has really been, how can we first and foremost keep our schools safe and at the same time provide different alternatives for students? And that's one of the areas where the personalized learning and one-to-one have students having devices, if a student does need to be removed from class, how can we continue to allow that student to have their education while maintaining order in the classroom and in the school in general?
Thank you. How are teachers reacting to that tension between, you know, it's like a careful tension, tension of keeping kids in a classroom because they're there to learn and then also making the classroom safe and productive for the other kids? How do, is there like a span of how teachers respond to that or is there information that they're given to help them navigate that?
Actually, in our conversations with principals recently, we're hearing reports and that a lot of the referrals aren't happening actually in the classroom. It might be a recess, it might be a hallway, and so the schools are taking different approaches to, so for example, at North Park, there's Playworks, it's a little bit more structured recess time and things like that to really reduce those areas. But out of the classroom, you know, we have responsive classroom, for example, and other ways that teachers work with kids and, you know, you get a couple of chances to correct your behavior and get back to work and sometimes kids need to take a little bit of a break and come on back, but if they can't handle it, then they are removed. But more often than not, what we're hearing from the principals is that the discipline is happening outside of the classroom in other areas.
Thank you. Next up will be the district's annual budget hearing, just truth and taxation hearing. I'll begin with a presentation by Christine Carr and Kelly Smith. Following the presentation, there'll be an opportunity for questions if you would like to ask questions specifically related to the budget. I would ask that you take a moment to fill out one of the blue cards completely and give it to Dawn over here on the side and you'll have an opportunity to ask those questions. That's how we'll be addressing any questions regarding the budget hearing.
Thank you Chair Larson, members of the school board. This evening I have Kelly Smith here with me, Vice President from Springstead, Inc., and he and I will be presenting the truth and taxation hearing. Our mission towards creating worlds of opportunity for every learner, of course, the budget has a big part in that. And the core values, in particular, this is addressing the community, collaboration, and integrity pieces of our core values. The agenda for this evening, the things we'll go over, we'll have a background on property tax levies, information on our school, current school year funding and the district budget, proposed taxes payable in 2018. Kelly will review factors that cause property tax changes, the estimated impact on taxpayers, and then also some conversation about Minnesota property tax refunds, and then of course, time for public comments and questions. So the Minnesota Truth and Taxation Law was revised in 2009 and this just cites the different requirements and outlines that law. The background on property tax levies, these are the steps that happen in the process on the property tax levies and it's important when you go through these to kind of understand that these are all happening simultaneously and we have a graph to show that in a little bit about the timeframe of these. But basically, the assessor determines the estimated market value and assigns a property class to each parcel. The county auditor then calculates that net tax capacity for each parcel in the county as well as the total net tax capacity for each taxing jurisdiction. The property tax, properties net tax capacity, it's determined by multiplying the market value by the relevant class rate. And class rates, it's important to know, they're set by statute, they vary by property type, but they're uniform statewide. The local tax rate of the taxing jurisdictions then determinated by, determined by dividing the jurisdiction's total levy by the jurisdiction's total net tax capacity. And of course, each jurisdiction sets its own levy and follows the limits by the state law. The county auditor divides the final levy by the district's net tax capacity to establish our rates and the county auditor applies those rates to each parcel and prepares the final statements for mailing. While all this is happening, the Department of Education is setting the maximum levy limits for each school district based on current legislation and formulas. And typically during the budget years of the, that the legislature operates, there are a lot of changes during that timeframe. And then the school board also adopts a proposed levy in September and holds a public meeting and then finalizes the levy amount in December, which is what we're here doing tonight. All the school district tax levies either have to be voter-approved or set by state statute or state law. And then this is just a slide that you're probably very familiar with, whenever we talk about the school district's budget, this topic comes up. And it's just a slide showing in blue, that's the actual basic formula allowance for the state. The green copy is the, if it were adjusted for inflation by Consumer Price Index, that's what it would actually be, so you can see there's a $1,256 per student gap there. And if you use the IPD, the inflation, no, I'm saying, I'm gonna say that wrong, inflation?
Implicit price.
Implicit price deflator. It would actually be a larger gap of 2514 per pupil, but the CPI is typically what people So the different types of funds that the school district has, the general fund is by and large the largest fund in the district, it's where all the daily operations happen, salary and benefits for staff, utilities, operating levy referendum, health and safety, transportation, capital expenditures. Food service is just what it sounds like, it's where all the food service activity happens. Community education is typically where the adult and early education happen. The debt service levy is where the capital principal and interest payments are for building projects. And this slide shows the basic overall FY 16, or 17, 18 budget that's been approved by the school board. The general fund are the top three lines, you can see that overall our general fund budget is $46.3 million of the total $54.2 million. So you can see by and large, that's where the money, most of the activity is. This is just a graphical depiction of revenues and again, you can see the general fund is by and large the largest area, 85.7% of revenues go through the general fund. And on the expenditure side, a graphical depiction, 85.4% of expenditures go through the general fund. The proposed property taxes payable in 2018, this was the, these were the dollar amounts that you've already seen. Certified pay levy in 2017 was $9.3 million, the proposed 2018 is $10.2 million. And this is just a depiction of where the, where all of these are split up into what funds. So this is the general fund and what's happening inside of the general fund. Overall, on the bottom, you can see the general fund certified in 2017, the levy was $5.7 million. This year, the proposed levy in the general fund is $6.4 million, so $691,000 increase, which is the majority of the increase in the overall proposed increase of levies. And here's a summary by fund, so again, the general fund's at the top, community service, building fund, debt service, and then the total with a 9.8% increase over pay 17. Now I'll turn it over to Kelly and he'll talk, he'll walk through some of the things that actually affect that and why there is such an increase this year.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, thanks for having me tonight. A lot of factors go into causing local school district levies to go up or down and I want to talk specifically to Columbia Heights' proposed levy for this year and some of the factors that are impacting it. Number of the factors I've highlighted, put in bold, the factors that are apparent or present in your current proposed levy, changes in enrollment, either up or down, have an impact on your overall levy, legislative changes, obviously, every two years, the state legislature sets rules for education, including funding formulas. Changes in market values, and you will see that as an impact in the district this year. And then levy adjustments to prior years. Levy adjustments occur because districts are making their best projection on what the circumstances are going to be out in 2018, 19 school year. We're projecting what enrollment will be and once the actual is known, the Department of Education goes back and looks at how close to the projection was the district and since funding is based on the number of students you have, if you were off either high or low, they make an adjustment and do that in the following year levy. So there are, there are always adjustments to the levy as actual numbers are found out for every district. And then changes in class rates and history can impact, and then voter-approved referendum, obviously, when, when your community members receive their proposed property tax notice, there was a potential bond election that was occurring. If that had been successful, that would have added to the current levy, so obviously, voter-approved issues can affect the levy. So District K-12 enrollment, while the district has been fairly consistent in enrollment, fairly steady from 2014, 15 to their projections to 18, 19, there have been some decreases in the last two years, slight decrease of 60, 0.67% for this current school year and just over 2% decrease in enrollment for next year. The legislature has changed some formulas, they increased general education formula by 2%, that is adding to the biggest pot of revenue for the district. They did increase equalization formula for operating capital and what that does is change the mix of aid and levy that revenue is broken down into. And in this case, it increased the amount of state aid that the district receives, so it lowered the local levy in this particular area of operating capital. There's a sunset of student achievement revenue and you'll see that a little bit, that that area, or in a previous slide, you saw that area went to zero for this proposed levy. And then a major increase for the district this year is long-term facilities maintenance adjusted pupil unit allowance. For the current school year, there's an allowance of $292 per pupil unit. For next school year, the 18, 19 year, it ramps up to $380 and that's set by formula. It was a three-year process, we started at $180 and it went to $292 and now we're at $380. That will be the cap unless there are specific legislative changes to that and you will see how that impact your local levy. I want, talked about changes in property tax values, there are different property valuations and Ms. Carr talked about net tax capacity and referendum market value in some of her discussions. So two columns on the right, referendum market value for the district, that is the tax value that's used to determine how much each parcel pays for an operating levy and local optional revenue. And that went up 7.74% for the district. And adjusted net tax capacity, any bond, debt, community service, and a number of other general ed-specific areas are paid through the adjusted net tax capacity and that also went up for your district 8.54%. Going to be a lot of numbers on the next few slides and I apologize, but if you have questions, certainly ask me, but trying to detail some of the specific areas that you saw increases in your levy. And three of those areas are the referendum, equity, and local optional revenue. All three areas were adversely affected by lower enrollment and higher property values. Without getting into too much detail, when your enrollment goes down and your property valuation goes up, in the eyes of the state, you become more property wealthy as a school district. And since a lot of funding formulas are equalized, that means they are a combination of state aid and local levy, the state determines that you have more capacity to pay local levy to pay for that service rather than need state aid. So when that happened in the district, even though you're not getting more total revenue in many cases, the levy is going up and state aid is going down. And so that happened in all three of these areas, referendum, equity, and local optional revenue. The ratio, the levy ratio was 78.1% and now it's 95.3%. So, so for $100 this year, or for next school year, in referendum revenue, $95 is coming from local levy, $5 from state aid, whereas for this current school year, payable 17 taxes for that same $100, $78 would be coming from local taxes and the remaining 22% coming from state aid. So you can see that's quite a significant shift. And the total dollars for each of those areas, operating levy increase, even though you had less money coming in as a district in total, the local levy increased by $282,000 just in that one area alone. Equity levy increase was fairly constant from year to year in total, but the levy increased by $93,000. And then local optional revenue, also revenue decreased because you have fewer students projected for next school year, but the levy portion of that increased. And here's even more numbers, but I tried to, tried to show on here, each of those areas broken out, referendum, equity, and local optional revenue. And the middle column levy and aid shows what those ratios were for payable 17, last year's levy. And then the levy aid column to the right is what is the proposed numbers for this year. And again, this is driven by state formula and a function of your enrollment and property value, so you as a school board unfortunately don't have control over it. So in summary, at the bottom, our, in total revenue for those three areas, for this, for last year's levy, it was $4.3 million and moving forward, it's $4.25 million, so it decreased by $45,000. That's the total revenue the district is projected to receive. However, the total levy increased by $623,000, state aid decreased by $668, so quite a significant shift in one year's time. Long-term facility revenue also was impacted slightly by this switch from state, or state aid to local levy. The ratio went up from 65.5% on last year's levy to 68.7%. So not as big a jump as the other areas, but this is the area, if you recall, the funding formula went up from $292 per student to $380 for next year, so the district's receiving more money and two-thirds of that new money is coming from local levy and that caused an increase of $246,000. In capital projects levy and on the district's budget, that, that shows up under the building fund for the district, that's a voter-approved levy that was approved by the voters several years ago. And the voters approved 5.67% of adjusted net tax capacity to generate revenue for this particular purpose. When your adjusted net tax capacity goes up and you keep that percentage constant, your overall revenue is going to go up as well. And you see here, it was about a $90,000 increase for capital projects levy. for capital projects levy. In the area of lease revenue and adjustments, these are leases the district has for facilities within their district to house certain programs for the district, or through members of cooperatives, intermediate districts that you may be a member of, such as TIES or Intermediate District 916. The intermediate district lease increased by $69,000. The local district leases decreased by 9,000 for overall lease increase of $60,000. And overall general fund adjustments, those corrections from past projections, they decreased from the previous year by $190,000. In the area, the Fund Community Education and Debt Service, community education, all areas were similar from year to year with the exception of school age childcare levy, a program that is developing within the district, that levy area increased by 69,000. And then debt service fund, there are schedules in place for debt service that fluctuate slightly from year to year, debt service increased by 33,000, and the excess reduction increased by 49,000. And excess reduction, it sounds kind of contrary terms there, but as a district's levy for debt service, they levy 105% of the required debt service to pay, make your annual payments for bonds. And you levy 105% to guarantee to bondholders that you can make that payment in case there are taxes that are not collected from your local district. The district typically is collecting nearly 105%, so you build up extra, and the state takes that back at times, and that's that excess reduction. So when all of those things from the previous slide are put together, that's that total increase of $914,000. And again, it's really driven, the two major issues in your district's case are that enrollment declined slightly, and the biggest piece is your local values, both for net tax capacity and referendum market value, were up significantly. So what does that look like for taxpayers? And these next slides are just going to show some examples, and this is, I want to emphasize, school district taxes only, and these are estimates, we asked county to try to give us the most current tax information that they have so we can make these calculations. In this first slide, we're looking at a homestead residential property that has no change in valuation, so if your home was worth $150,000 in pay 17, and you have a notice that it's going to be the exact same value for next year, you could anticipate a $27 increase on that $150,000 home. The next slide, since most property in the school district was seeing an increase, I plugged in a 7.75% increase, and that matched the referendum market value increase for the district, and that's the largest share of your generated taxes, so I use 7.75 for this. Here again, I'm going to use that $150,000 home with a 7.75% increase, we now have a valuation of $161, and you can see there, the increase is going to be about $79, so certainly that increase in taxes raised, raised that overall tax impact significantly for that piece of property. The next several slides are just different types of property classifications, non-residential homestead prop, non-homestead residential property, going to be very similar to the homestead numbers, slightly higher in these lower valued homes, 100, 150, and $250,000 homes, and then they will be the same after $415,000 homes. For apartment complexes, they are taxed at a different class rate, and here for a $250,000 valued apartment complex, without any change in valuation, you'll see the increase there of about $43. For the next is commercial industrial property, and again, that is a separate class rate, so it's taxed at a different level. And then in district, we always put these slides at the end, whether district has had an overall decrease or increase in your levy, because there are many individual circumstances out there for property owners, but just wanted to make people aware of two different property tax refunds that are available. And the Minnesota property tax refund really is available, it's, it is income specific, so there are limitations based on the amount of income that you use, it's available for both renters and homeowners, and there are a graded scale of tax rebates that are available based on the amount of property tax that you pay, so I would encourage you to check with your tax provider to see if those are options for you. And then the special property tax refund is non-income specific, if local property taxes have gone up 12% in a given year, you're eligible for property tax refund as well. So those are some we want to make you aware of, there's more information out at the Department of Revenue at the www.taxes.state.mine.us. And with that, turning back to Ms. Carr.
Thank you, Kelly. And now we're open for comments and questions.
Start with, let me start with them. Anybody that has any questions, you get any sheets filled out, don't?
Yeah, no, I was just curious if you've looked at other districts that are kind of neighbors, and what this looks like compared to other districts this year.
Well, actually, there's a big article in the Minneapolis Tribune on Sunday that showed that, and it's really quite comparable to the member, or to the districts around here, pretty consistently, there's very high single or very low double-digit increases in tax values, and therefore levies.
Thank you.
So just to wrap my head around this a little bit, so basically what we're talking about is that we've got the local dollars that come from our local taxpayers, and then there's state funding, in a very simple form of this, there's the state funding, and then there's the local taxpayer, the local tax, or the local levy funding, and that totals a pool of money, right? So that's, and that's what we have, and that's what you showed the information on. So what we're saying is what's happening is because our property values have increased in Columbia Heights, there's a greater tax capacity, or there's more funding that's available because of those higher property values, and so what happens then is the community has more possibility or dollars to be able to provide funds to the school, and then the state then reduces funding to compensate for that.
That's correct. If you remember this slide, with a lot of the numbers that Kelly went through, the general fund where most of the activity happens, the shift in that fund alone was $623,000, so exactly what you're talking about, because the property taxes went up, the state views that, and the processes and the calculations view that as there's more wealth in the property values to support the funding, and so the aid from the state goes down, and the levy from the local taxpayers goes up.
So essentially, by having a greater tax capacity in Columbia Heights, we are less reliable on, or is that the right word?
Reliant.
Reliant, thank you. We are less reliant on state funding, and really have our community members that are providing the funding to the district.
That's correct.
Okay. Couple more questions. Thank you. Could you have any idea, and I'm not sure if you have this information, the last time Columbia Heights had an average of 8% increase in property value?
I do not have that information.
I can tell you the last five years, because that's on your levy sheet. Just looking at net tax capacity, of course, in, from 11 to 12, you actually decreased, and property valuations are slow things to move, so we had the market crash in eight, seven, eight, and then about three years later, those valuations started to show up in local districts. So you hit a low spot at about 2012, it was steady for 12 and 13, and then it increased, got to do some quick math, yeah, I'd have to calculate that here. It was a significant step up the next year, was steady, and then now again, an 8% increase. So it has been increasing for the last three years, this was a pretty significant step up with them.
So I know that we had voted previously to, you know, to have the max, and we had to have the, vote to have the maximum levy, and we had to do that because we didn't have this information at that time, because all of this was happening concurrently.
Right, that's a question a lot of people have, is why do districts levy the max in September? And really, the reason you do that is because all of those calculations are helping, happening simultaneously, so the legislature has just completed their work, sometimes in July even, MDE's making calculations, the county and city are putting their information in, and if you would levy less than the max in September, that's your limit of what you can do in December. So if you would levy a specific dollar amount, and then the calculations from the city or county or MDE changed, and it was adverse to your district, you wouldn't have any recourse to change it, you would be capped at what you put in September. So it really gives the board the most options in December to make adjustments to what might be happening in market values, or with city or county or local taxes.
So then in September, if we would have said, okay, let's levy the exact dollar amount that we've gotten the year before, then seeing these numbers come out and showing that there's a $691,000 shortfall, then we'd essentially be $691,000 short.
Right, and the general fund, it would have been over $600,000 difference just because of that marketing value increase.
And looking at the discrepancy, or the difference in the funding from the, that the state had provided previously, and now is not provided, and is being compensated by the local dollars, that was it $691,000, that's really general fund dollars?
In the general fund, it was a $623,000 shift.
$60,000 shift in the general fund. And out of our budget that we operate, what makes up the majority of that general fund? What expenses are in there?
So that's mostly staffing, and all of your, you know, building operations, your utilities, your supplies, your contracted services, that type of thing. So most of it's people, and the general fund, I think it's, it's over 70, it's like 71.5% is our salary and benefits, so it's really people.
So then if we were not to have the, and at this point, the state's not going to change what they're going to give us, because they've determined what our tax capacity is, and so they've determined what they're going to be able to provide for us. So if we were to change what we are going to levy for our community, what we would have to do is figure out, how do we take that reduction out of staffing benefits, and because we can't really change our utility costs and whatnot, so it would really, it would come down to staffing.
Right, and if you make any change like that, it's not just the levy amount, so as Kelly was going through all those different types of levy, he talked about the levy ratio, and some of them were 70% and 80% and 90%, depending on where the decrease would be, you'd also lose aid from the states.
Okay, all right. To reiterate that, you're saying that if we don't maximize our levy to our community, the state will actually kind of penalize us, or take away?
Right, you lose more than just the levy, you lose state aid at the same time.
I think those are all the questions I have.
Did you have a question?
No, I'm, it just, it was nice to hear the questions over again.
Can I ask a question? It's obviously a complicated, complicated formula that the state's kind of put on, and it's obviously not the choice of our district or this board to make this this complicated. What's the wisdom in such a complicated formula? Is there a meta I'm not catching, or is it just how tax evolves, and then it's just become this complicated?
It's really all driven by the legislature, so that's really one of the complications even for MDE, when they're working with districts to try and get the levy certified, and get things done in September, October, November. Every time the legislature meets and they make a change, it typically will impact this, and just put another level of complication in the formula. I think the levy certification report this year is 48 pages long, just formulas.
I would just add, as strange as it sounds, in an effort to make the system as fair as possible, we now have a 40-plus page system of formulas to try to make sure that that student in a rural district is getting equitably funded at the same rate as someone in a high property value metro district, for example. So whenever you try to, it's like somebody once said about tax reform, it's that I pay less and you pay more, I mean, that's tax reform in its simplest, and here, when you're trying to level, make a level playing field, you're looking at the capacity that individual districts have, and cost of living, and all those factors are thrown into all these formulas. So it's trying to balance that out, so students have equitable education no matter what district they're educated in.
Does it accomplish that task?
I would say it makes a start toward doing that, and that's why it's constantly discussed at the legislature, are there better ways to maybe do these formulas?
I have one more question, sorry. So during the 2014 levy, and then the most recent bond referendum that was attempted, the average home value of $150,000 was used to demonstrate to taxpayers what a potential tax burden would be based on the referendum or whatnot. So looking at that now, and if there would be to be future information out there, I'm assuming that the average home value in Columbia Heights is no longer, and I think it was 149.9 or something is what it was, I'm assuming now that the average home in Columbia Heights is now higher.
Yeah, the Star Tribune article quoted it at 168.9 or something, close to $170,000 is the median price for a home in Columbia Heights School District now.
So going forward, that's the information that needs to be presented to voters?
And we check every year with each district and their auditor assessor, what's the average home value, so we try to keep that as current as possible.
Thank you.
I'm going to kind of put you on the spot, Christine, but I certainly understand that there's a frustration with increase in taxes, I mean, I'm impacted by that, everybody sitting at the table is impacted by that, you know, and as a board, it's our responsibility to do the best we can with the dollars that we have, but I think this is maybe more on my pedestal here, platform for a minute, but unfunded mandates that we currently pay for out of our general fund, would you put a ballpark figure on what we're taking out of, because the state or the federal government says you will do this, and not that those things aren't good, because the majority of it is special ed, correct?
Correct, yeah.
We're taking this money, I just, sorry, just a second, so we're being told we need to do these things, they're all positive things for our students, because every student should have the opportunity to get that, the learning, but then they're saying, you're going to do it, but we're not going to support that, that, I guess that's the number I'm looking for, so people understand what we're working with.
Right, and I think, you know, you mentioned special education, and that is the most obvious and largest unfunded mandate, and we're working on some documentation to bring to the school board in January to kind of document that, because every year, it's a part of a legislative agenda to try and get the state and federal government to address it. But currently, just in our district, the cross subsidy, every year, MDE, the Minnesota Department of Education puts out a report that talks about what the cross subsidy is, and cross subsidy meaning the school district is supporting that cost of education out of the general education fund. So the federal government for special ed said that they would fund that mandate at 40%, and they've never even come close, I think the highest they've ever funded it is probably 19%. Currently, our unfunded mandate in special education is over $5 million a year, so basically $5 million from the general fund is supplementing special education in a manner where the federal government said they would pay for those costs when they pass those statutes.
So if they funded even close to what they said, and we're literally taking $5 million plus out of our general fund, because they're saying you need to do this, but we're not plus out of our general fund, because they're saying you need to do this, but we're not going to support you financially?
Is that, that's about 10% of our budget, right?
It is 10% of the total overall budget, yeah.
Okay, so the, then again, I guess where I was going with this is, again, I'm no happier about my taxes going up than anyone else, but, you know, are we really the root of the problem, or is it a bigger problem? You know, is it at the state, where, you know, if those types of things were changed there, would we be doing things differently with, or could we be doing things differently with our levies?
When you think about, you know, kind of the big three things we just talked about this evening, the mandate, and then market value increases, and student enrollment, you know, the legislature and the federal government certainly control the mandates, and the market values really is, and the formulas of how they split aid versus levy based on your market value, that's certainly also controlled at the legislature, it isn't controlled by the school board. And enrollment, you can't really control either. It is something that we can work on at the local level and try to impact, but all three of those issues are really not something that you can just vote to change.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I think a positive takeaway from this is that we're showing positive growth in our community, and all the values of our homes are going up, and for those of us that are homeowners, then that's a positive place to be.
All right, well, that concludes the annual budget hearing, piece of our meeting tonight. Next, we would move on. Move, thank you. Now, we would move on to our action items. The first up is the P-2018 levy.
Thank you, Chair Larkin, members of the school board. Based on the presentation that we just had, each year, we must certify the school levy in December, with a tax hearing before taking action. Attached is the information with the different levy components, and I'd ask for a motion tonight to certify the P-2018 levy as presented.
For a motion to move that forward?
So moved.
Pauline?
Second.
Ms. Natty? Discussion, questions, or comments?
Repeat on the last discussion.
Let's use that as our discussion, okay?
Yeah.
All right, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christine. Next up would be the resolution to combine precincts for special election. Dawn?
Good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the board. I am here tonight to ask you to approve the resolution that is in front of you, combining the polling places for special elections. There's been a change in the state statute that requires us to do this annually, before it was just once, whenever, for as long as you needed it. So we talked about this at our November 28 meeting.
Thank you for stalling while I look for the resolution.
It's in our packet.
Ask for a motion a second, and then I'll read the resolution.
So moved.
Pauline? Thank you. Resolution establishing combined polling places for multiple precincts and designating hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections, not held on the day of a statewide county or municipal election. Be resolved by the school board of independent school district 13, state of Minnesota as follows. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 205a.11, the precincts and polling places for school district elections are those precincts or parts of precincts located within the boundaries of the school district, which have been established by the cities or towns located in whole or in part within the school district. The board hereby confirms those precincts and polling places so established by those municipalities. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 205a.11, when no other election is being held in the school district, the school board may designate combined polling places at which the voters in those precincts may vote in the school district election. By December 31 of each year, the school board must designate by resolution combined polling places. The combined polling places designated in the resolution are polling places for the following calendar year unless a change is made pursuant to Section 204b.172, or because a polling place has become available. If a school, if the school board designated combined polling places pursuant to the subdivision polling places must be designated throughout the district, taken into account both geographical distribution and population distribution. A combined polling place must be at a location designated for use as a polling place by county or municipality. In school districts that have organized and separate school board members election district under Section 205a.12, a combined polling place for a school general election must be arranged so that it does not include more than one board member election district. And so the polling places for the combined for, is Valley View Elementary and Highland Elementary, locations 849th Avenue for Valley View, 1549th Avenue for Highland Elementary. The precincts for Valley View would be Precinct 1, Precinct 2, Precinct 7, Precinct 8. And Fridley would be W1 and P4, and then W3 and P4, and Hilltop P1. At Highland, Columbia Heights, Precinct 3, Precinct 4, Precinct 5, Precinct 6, and for Fridley, W2, P3, W2, P4. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 205a.09, the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. The clerk is directed to prepare a map illustrating the boundaries of each combined precinct, to post the map of the combined precincts in the administrative offices of the school district, and to file a copy of the map and a certified copy of this resolution with county auditor of each county in which a school district is located in whole or in part. As required by Minnesota Statute Section 204b.16, subdivision 1A, the clerk is hereby authorized and directed to give written notice of new polling place locations to all registered voters in the school district whose school district polling place locations have been changed. The notice must be non-foreable notice mailed at least 25 days before the date of the first election to which it will apply. Wow, okay. Questions, comments, discussion?
I think Lori had mentioned this last time we discussed this, but this is in an effort to save the school district money.
It's a significant amount.
Okay.
We combined 13 into 2, that's a significant savings, and it's down to salaries mainly.
So would it be safe to give an overview of, for a special election, not a general election?
Correct.
We would collapse all of our precincts down to Highland and Valley View?
Correct.
Okay, which we've done previously, but, and we're doing this because we're required to prior to the end of the year?
Correct.
Each year?
In case.
In case, okay. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, this is a resolution, so we would need a little call, Natty.
Palmer?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Samurai?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, next up is the appointment of a TIES Board of Directors School Board alternate.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, before you have a resolution to appoint an alternative, we have a meeting coming up in January, and that's a joint powers meeting. We'll be voting, and all the members of the joint powers will be conducting a vote to either dissolve TIES as it exists right now, today, or to maintain TIES, but work on major changes to the bylaws moving forward. So it is a very major vote, even though we have submitted our letter to withdraw from TIES, we still are currently members. And so it's an important vote, we want to ensure that we've done what we need to do properly to have our two votes there. And this resolution will appoint an alternative from the board, Superintendent Kelly will be that other vote. And so, any questions about the resolution?
Actually, it's a motion versus a resolution. And just to be clear, we're changing our, the current person that's appointed.
Yep.
Person is not available, so we want to, we want to, and I'll read the motion, and then I'll ask for a motion in a second. The motion, suggested motion is to appoint Lawyer Mueller as the alternate to the TIES Board of Directors to represent Columbia Heights Public School Board of Education at the January 24, 2018 special call board meeting. So that's the suggested motion, so I would, motion a second, then we can have some conversation if we need to.
So moved.
Pauline?
Second.
Pauline? Questions, comments?
I do have a question. This is a little unusual, and we have an alternate here. Is there a legal reason that we need to have this actually in board policy to, or can we just send a board member? I'm just kind of curious, this is unusual.
It is unusual. It's, we've looked at the bylaws of TIES, and with a lot of areas within the bylaws of TIES, there's some gray areas, and we just want to make sure that we're covering every aspect of those gray areas, and making sure we follow this process, so that down the road, they can't say that our vote was invalidated because we didn't follow this. Because there's areas where they're interpreting things different than what we feel could be interpreted in the bylaws, so this is what recommended to us, to ensure that we have approved an alternative at the board level, to make sure that our votes, both our votes count.
Okay. Thank you.
Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Four topics.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that glance over. I did not mention earlier, under board member activities, but I do want to make a note of congratulating one of our seniors, Manny Alvarez. I had an opportunity to watch him play at US Bank Stadium on Saturday. He was representing Columbia Heights very well at the All-State Football Game, so congratulations to Manny.
I also want to remind the public that our work sessions are open to the public. If anyone ever wanted to come and sit in on those, you're more than able to do that, and we'd love to have you there.
One item is that the Middle School Musical is this weekend. Sorry, I stole your thunder. Thursday, Friday, Saturday at 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 2:00, Into the Woods Junior. Should be a great show, talented middle schoolers at the.
Performing Arts Center.
At the heart of the center in the high school.
Okay, I guess I don't have any more topics. Anybody else? Hearing nothing, we'll adjourn the meeting at 8:59.